I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is there anyone else recording this meeting tonight? Seeing none, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have a great crowd with us this evening. These individuals here represent some of our new staff members from across the district. As I've shared with you over the past couple of meetings, we've been fortunate to bring on some really dynamic, excellent educators to join the APS team. Not all were able to attend, so what I'd like to do is to read the names of the individuals from each school who are new to our district, as well as I'll read anyone who made transfers. So, as I call your name, if you want to just take a quick stand and you can sit so the school committee can see you would be great. Excuse me. From Auburn High School, Sarah Paquette in Social Studies. From Auburn Middle School, we have Matthew Carlson, who is the Vice Principal there. Rebecca Harvey is the Computer Technology Teacher. And Elizabeth McCarthy is the Speech and Language Pathologist. From Packagaw, we have Jennifer Ramsdale, who was a Team Chair actually for both Packagaw and Mary D. Stone Schools. From JB, we have Jessica Burbank, Grade Four. Victoria Harkins, Grade Four. Robert Leslie as the Music Teacher. And Rachel Festermaker as the Moderate Special Needs Teacher. From Bryn Mawr School, we have Erin Barron as the Moderate Special Needs Teacher and April Bouzon as the Elementary School Counselor. And from Mary D. Stone, we have Meredith Linden for Kindergarten and Christine Jemay for Grade One. We've also had some transfers to people who had different positions previously that I'd like to also announce. So, Amy Cosio is teaching Grade One at Bryn Mawr School. Linda Konesny is teaching Kindergarten at Bryn Mawr School. Jenna McMenamy is Moderate Special Needs at Bryn Mawr. Allison Hill Sheree is Grade One Teacher at Mary D. Mark Harver has gone to the iPad Media Specialist at the Middle School. Samantha Kozic to Moderate Special Needs at the High School. And Cheryl Scanlon to Grade Three at Packagaw. So, welcome aboard, everyone. And those who weren't able to come, we're very excited to have you on board.
Anyone have anything?
Excited, excited for you guys to start.
I wish you well. I taught in Auburn for forty-one years and I loved every minute of it, so I'm wishing the same for you.
Welcome aboard, glad to have you. We've heard some good things about you, believe it or not. We're does travel fast through the grapevine and we've got the names and we've got some stories behind them and we're glad to have you. Good luck. And thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Sure, you're dismissed. Have a great night.
Probably have plans to do, right? Yeah.
School tomorrow.
Oh, that's... Yeah, 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 now I see if they said, yeah. The next item, Matt Carlson is still here with us. Both he and Beth Chamberlain, Principal of the Bryn Mawr School, were both, they both applied and were selected to sit on the Mass Department of Ed's Educator Effectiveness Principal Cabinet. Matt provided a bit of information regarding this. And what they noted was from DESI, that is to improve the professional growth in student learning. This ESE Cabinet, the Principal's Educator Effectiveness Cabinet, will be committed to ensuring the success of the statewide ed eval framework by providing educators with training materials and resources, meaningful guidance and timely communications, as well as by engaging educators in the development and ongoing refinement of the framework. So, they'll be meeting four times this year. They'll also do four additional call-in conference calls throughout the year. But I congratulate and thank Beth and Matt for representing Auburn and I knew they'll do a great job.
Thank you, Matt. Anything from the committee?
Thank you, it sounds wonderful.
Please congratulate and thank Beth for us when you see her. Once you guys get started, it's going to be very exciting. I'm sure, tell us, come back and tell us all about it.
And before Mr. Handfield leaves, I'll just announce, he was actually approached by, approached by a retired teacher, excuse me, a retired principal up in the North Shore primarily, that six Dutch school superintendents are interested in visiting high schools with innovative programs including technology. So, Mr. Handfield and Ms. Dunne, who have graciously agreed to host them, they're going to be coming in early October for a visit. They'll answer any questions, give them a tour. But exciting to have our school being recognized by individuals even outside of Massachusetts and the States.
It'll be a first for us with the Dutch, so interested in their perspective.
That's great.
So, yeah, so we're excited about that. I'll be happy to report on their visit. They're excited that we do a talking back and forth every day.
Great.
So, yeah, so.
That's wonderful.
Now, will you be visiting over there?
Perhaps.
Could it be?
Take a lot of pictures.
If you're for Cluey's International Travel.
That's right. All right, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
As we do each year, the Chapter 159 of the Acts of Two Thousand requires that there be a joint meeting, that we have multi-hazard plans in place and that the Chiefs of Police and Fire, as well as the Superintendent sit down to review them. As noted here, this has been a practice that we've been following for all of the years that I've been here and those prior. We're so fortunate to have the Safety Advisory Team that we have in place. It includes representatives of school, fire and police. It was in place long before there was the requirement that one be. It was really in place for the good of the students and the safety of our schools and the entire school community. So, I thank the Chiefs, the Safety Advisory Team and really everybody because it's an effort that requires all of us to always be, as they say, you know, think on your feet and you really need to be prepared. So, we're fortunate in Auburn to have that. A wonderful donation that I was, we were recently made aware of, both Bryn Mawr School and Mary D. notified us that they were contacted by the local customer service manager of Shaw's here in Auburn. And each has been adopted as part of their "We Love Our Schools", Back to School Donation Program. Each will receive $400 to be used at their discretion, as well as some product donations for special events over the course of the year, as well as volunteer hours. So, really a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And a letter has been sent to Shaw's and it is my recommendation that we approve that.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude the donation of $400 to both Mary D. Stone and Bryn Mawr Schools from Shaw's Supermarket.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Thank you, I think it's very generous, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Another donation that came our way, Mr. Roger Bellheimer, former Fire Chief here in Auburn for an awful long time and now part of Bell's Lawn and Garden. Called and donated many seeds to the Auburn Public Schools for fall planting. So, those will be shared with the schools. So, it is my recommendation, it's a great learning experience. My recommendation that we accept that donation with gratitude as well.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the donation of seed packets from Bell's Lawn and Garden.
Do I have a second directly? Any discussion?
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. All in favor? Aye, unanimous.
Each year at the start of the year, I provide to you a class size update. As you know, school committee, we actually, in the teacher's contract, that there is a guideline that we like to have, you like to have twenty-five, I do as well, twenty-five or less students in our elementary schools, classrooms. When that number approaches the week of fourth class, the one hundred mark, I brought it back to you for your review and consideration. We have had a number of students this past summer register in all of our schools with less withdrawals. It's really a difficult thing to predict. So, what I'd ask for you this evening, I'm in communication with the Principals of both Mary D. and Packagaw. And based on the numbers that they have currently, what we're looking at is specifically for the reading and math blocks, the literacy and math blocks, to be sure that we are reducing that class size as much as possible or the student-teacher ratio. And how we've done that in the past is to hire an instructional assistant. If there's not already either a special educator in that room, if it's co-taught, a math paraprofessional or an instructional assistant. So, what I'd ask for your approval of tonight is to hire up to two instructional assistants. I'll report back at the next meeting. We're still looking at the schedules. I feel fairly confident that it will be one at each school that will be shared, but I just want to confirm that again with principals. So, with your approval, I would ask that we have up to, my flexibility for up to two, and we do have funding for that.
Are you looking for that in the form of a motion?
I would, actually, yes.
I entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's already in the budget, then, you know, it's... There are a lot of kids here, the numbers are high, so I think it's in the best interest of the teachers too, so.
Any other discussion? I would agree that there is a reason that we put those numbers in place and even one or two is too many. And of course, you'll report back to us if it's only one needed.
Absolutely.
So, if the money's in the budget and it certainly can't hurt to, to hire at least one for now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. The busing update, we actually had a leadership team meeting earlier this afternoon and much to Mr. Barber's happiness, as well as all of the Principals and myself, the busing is going extremely smoothly this year. There's always, there typically always some delays and drop-off times until the routes smooth out, but we really have great arrival and dismissal times already. One of the challenges, and we share this with you, and I know last year, a last school year, on multiple meetings and through email and on one-call notifications, our goal was to have no late passes submitted after the June first deadline. As you can see here, there were almost four hundred that came in. So, it made it, and especially in August and as it got closer to the start of school, makes it really challenging when we have that massive of an influx of people. It costs the individuals an additional $50 per pass. For those individuals who otherwise would have received a free pass because they qualified, they still have to pay the charge. So, we will continue next year to really press upon people to get these into us with the reminders, but it creates a challenge. And even despite those, it's been a great start with our busing, really great start.
If I could ask a question? Because I've kind of forgotten, what, what's the fee for bus passes and when do they have to?
It's $100 per student and this year it was due by June first.
And is that all grades or just from seven on up?
All grades.
All grades?
Yes, so there are different criteria. So, it, through grades seven through twelve, all are required to purchase a pass. The elementary schools, they have to live within a certain mileage, so. But if any...
Above two miles.
Above two miles, yeah. It's free. But for any, anyone who's free or reduced lunch, there is no fee so long as the application is submitted in advance. So, these late numbers are actually fairly much in keeping with what we've had in years past. It just, you know, it proves challenging. I mean, the front office was beyond hectic the last eight to ten days. I mean, lines at the door, so.
Could you just give the newer members kind of a background on where that started and what the number for the late fee was, just so they can understand why we're at this point?
Yeah, so it was always $100, since it's been instituted, $100 per student, up to a maximum of $250 per family, so there was a max on it. I think that the late fee was less at one time. We, the school committee had raised it really to try and encourage people and said, "We don't want to collect any late fees." But they thought by raising it, it would be an incentive for people to submit it a little bit sooner. And it's not working yet.
Not really working.
Right, for the, for the routes to be created and that way the stops. So, what has happened is after the routes are created during the summer, you know, and we have this influx, now we need to go back and relook at the routes. Some stops need to be added. So, it just, it compounds the challenge all across the board.
How many buses are we running?
Ten, still ten, ten, yes.
And I can tell you that last year, we had some visitors here and we failed the phone calls as school committee members and I'm sure the office was overrun with, with phone calls of unhappy parents and unhappy about the time of the route, the length of the route. But all of that is stuff that should be taken care of well ahead of time. But when you've got four hundred people, is that the number you said, four?
Three hundred and eighty-nine.
Three eighty-nine, pushing four hundred, yeah, that's, that's a bit much. So, just a little background on why that is. I don't think we need to increase it, it doesn't seem to be having an effect right now.
Unless we prorate it. And if you're partially late, it's fifty and if you're more, if you're into August, it's even more. I mean, that's awful.
All right.
Maybe something to consider.
Thank you, thanks for that explanation.
Do we have any buses at maximum capacity because of the influx?
Mr. Barber is watching that he meets regularly with the bus company. And currently right now, no, we're not overcapacity on any of them. But should that be the case, it would require that the routes be reconfigured. Then you'd be impacting even more than one bus.
Yeah.
So, we're hoping to avoid that if possible. Just to make you aware, the Special Education Program Plan, this needs to be signed, I believe it is every five years. There's actually a grant assurance document that I sign annually. This one requires Mr. Scooby to sign, as well as Ms. Kaufman, our Director of Pupil Services and me. And basically states that we agree by accepting this money that we will comply with all federal and state regulations, which we do. Just wanted to make you aware. Recently spoke with Mr. Kazanovich in the fall. Special Town Meeting is slated for, tentatively slated for October twenty-first. The warrant will open on September eighth for two weeks, therefore closing on the twenty-second. Mr. Barber and I will be reviewing needs and gathering information from Principals. If there's a need for any item, it would require the school committee to approve any warrant article that was brought forward and we will have that information for you on the seventeenth.
And would we be expected to attend that town meeting if that happens?
Yes. In fact, I would ask all of us to plan to be there. In the past, we've always gone, even if there's not been any warrant articles, we, the school committee would set up in the front with the Board of Select and Finance Committee and Towns Administration. That would be great.
Would we now move on to unfinished business?
The iPad distribution has gone extremely well for eighth and ninth graders and I really credit Mr. Bouvier, Ms. Bootot, Mr. Marino, Mr. Gagnon, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Handfield, Ms. Dunne, you and a whole team of teachers that volunteered their time and staff members from both schools to be there to really expedite the process. Mr. Barber was instrumental in that as well, having all of the documentation done in advance, emailed to families, one-call notifications. Many families came with everything done in advance, which really helped. Mr. Bouvier and others put on the website the step-by-step directions retrieving their Apple ID. And once that was all in place, it was very seamless. And through the management program that Mr. Bouvier runs, all of the apps were ready. Once the child logged in with their Apple ID, had paid their fee, it automatically populated their iPad with all of the school-approved apps. So, it really is a very exciting system. And as you can imagine, the students are thrilled to have these, as they should be. It's a, it's a great thing and the teachers have really embraced it. So, I look forward to some, some really exciting things this year and we'll certainly have them come and do some demonstrations as the year gets underway.
Yeah, I have parent friends who, whose children have the iPads and they have all said that it's been great, you know, it was easy and so, yeah. Kudos to the instructional team, yeah.
I will pass that on, thank you. I leave this on here, we are getting closer in terms of any budgeting priorities that you have. And one reminder, and I'll share this a little bit when I go through my goals, the strategic plan, when that was created and unanimously accepted by the school committee, you'll see us reference that when we do budget presentations because the intention of that was to really drive the decisions as we go forward over the next several years. So, it'll tie in with budgeting, it'll tie in with educational priorities, materials that we may, that we may do. But also obviously, as we always have, we've got class size concerns, middle school building and achievement, textbooks, technology. And obviously, first and foremost is always students and their achievement. The hiring update, we are nearly complete with this. We have all professional positions filled at this time. We've got a couple of support positions yet to be filled, but I, I'm sure I say this every year and it is hard to lose staff when they retire or resign or otherwise move on. But we've brought on, and kudos to the Principals who have, and their teams who went through the interview process. We've really brought on some really outstanding individuals who I, I know would be a great compliment and I hope are around as long as Mrs. Holloway was in the Auburn Public Schools.
Couldn't get rid of me.
Yeah, you know what, the stability.
Yeah, still. You act like a bad pen, huh?
But stability and leadership is clearly research, there's a strong research base. But even stability in our whole team, it really helps to help us move forward. So, it's a great beginning for us, I think.
Before we move on to new business, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the August thirteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now move on to new business. It's okay, I know you're in a hurry.
Okay, I don't mean to be, I'm sorry. So, what I have provided for you at your seats, and it's an awful lot to digest, so I share it with you for your review and perhaps if it's your pleasure, we will add it to the meeting of September seventeenth as well. This first document here, this is the required Department of Ed, part of the model system for ed eval. And all educators across the Auburn Public Schools are in the process now of completing their self-assessment. We look at the different indicators and determine where we believe we fall. And based on that, it should help to drive the goals that we set. Now, internally as a leadership team, we have set the goal of having self-assessments completed by September twelfth and goals by October first. So, I share this with you, I welcome your feedback on my self-assessment. You will see that in many regards, and I think this is typical across the district, that in any given year or perhaps over one year's time, it wouldn't be tremendous flexibility in any of these ratings. I think to really affect substantial and long-lasting change, it takes more than a year. Research would say it takes three to five years. So, this looks somewhat similar, quite similar, I would say, to last year's. But where I did make some changes was to the goals. And what doesn't come out quite, quite as well as it should have legibly, it does have a watermark of draft marked there because this is a requirement for us to come up jointly to agreement around goals. And as I noted up at the top of this, many of these, if not most of these goals, tie directly to the strategic plan. Again, the intention being that would drive our work over the next several years. So, as administrators, we are required, and this goes for our Principals, Mr. Barber, all leadership team members, to have student learning, professional practice and district improvement goals. We're required to have one at least in each area. Once these are created, and then with the strategic plan really being the driver of this, Principals will create theirs. And the idea is, as part of the PowerPoint I did on opening day, is if we do our work really well and strategically, the district's goals through the strategic plan drive the administrative's goals, which drive the teachers' goals, which drive the student goals, and then it's just this large cycle that goes around. So, what I noted in here, in looking at the strategic plan, I could have simply said, implement the strategic plan, but I need to have it broken into three areas. So, I tried to pick out some really key ones. Every facet of the plan is important and will be adhered to. But I pulled out here the ones that I would report on to you specifically. In terms of student learning, some of the key initiatives are co-teaching and inclusion, really to look at our preschool program. The evidence is clear that, you know, the earlier we can help students to overcome challenges and to help them get on the pathway to success, the better they are. Our one-to-one iPad initiative is off to a great start now. But to really strategically plan for that expansion over the next several years, work with the leadership team, always want to be sure that we're addressing those achievement gap issues. That's a concern for us, obviously. We aspire to be a level-one district, as do all districts. In terms of professional practice, the educator evaluation implementation really is a tremendous driving force of what we do. And we've really tried to capitalize on that to affect change. And as I've said to the teachers and administrators, if we're having deeper and more frequent conversations about teaching and learning that impact what happens in the classroom, then it's a success. We will implement district-determined measures this year, as well as student and staff feedback. So, two new facets to the program, just another layer that we're adding on. But I couldn't be prouder of the, the entire Auburn Public Schools team. They've really embraced this and it has been, it's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of paperwork, but we focus on our conversation. So, I think it is, is having the impact that we wanted to, or the department wanted it to. I'm going to try and, we did well with our Facebook page this past year. I'm going to try and expand even a bit further to Twitter and probably some other social media that I don't even know of yet. But I'm going to try to venture in that direction. It has been very well received, so I want to continue to do that. I believe firmly in that home-school community connection. And then lastly, these two look very, very much the same as last year, but this is work that never was intended to be done in one year. The success, successful transition into our new middle school this fall, grades three to five into a renovated 10 Swanson Road, Mary D. to pack. So, that is work that I don't think there's a week that goes by that we're not doing some work around that. So, I have that. And then finally, to be sure that we're staying in regular communication, not only with you and providing updates, but with the Auburn community too. It's only because of their support and your support, obviously, that we're able to have a beautiful building going up and making these transitions and making the progress that we are. So, we will continue to do that.
Any comments?
Can I get one of those?
Oh, sorry. All right.
No problem.
Nothing? We will, we'll go over some of this evaluation stuff.
There's one, so.
Probably at...
The next meeting, if you want, and we could, to vote these would be great. In that way, they'll be in place. Because our meeting after the seventeenth is October first. So, if you want, we can add this to the September seventeenth agenda and vote then.
Okay.
So, we would discuss this or vote to accept these goals or?
Or make any changes, yeah, recommend any changes to that, absolutely.
Okay. And moving on to business and financial.
Great.
Good evening. I've got three points of information just to review with you. First, which you'll see in your handouts, it's, it's our fiscal year fourteen closeout. And what this relates to is the final budget transfers that occurred during the month of June, basically after the period of time where we needed to finalize the remaining portions of our appropriations for our fiscal year fourteen budgets that we were awarded. With this, again, it's more or less for informational purposes, but you'll see where we had to make modifications or changes for things that were up to two pennies to things up to potentially a thousand dollars. And that allowed for us to make sure that our budget for all of the expenses relating to whatever the respective grouping might be, were purely balanced to the penny. So, that's again, just for informational purposes there. The second topical item is regarding our budget timelines for fiscal year fifteen. As you'll also, or as you'll find here, this is actually our, my apology, fiscal year sixteen's budget timelines that over the next couple of weeks will be pretty much kicking off our budget plan and process that we'll be implementing for our next fiscal year. With that being the case, obviously, Dr. Brunel and I will be sitting, going through a handful of information in which this timeline, for the most part, will allow for you to get a good overview as far as the different steps and levels that we'll be going through over the course of the next couple of months. If you have any questions on this, I'll be more than happy to answer them. A third item that you'll see here is, one of the items that I had attended back on July eleventh was actually appropriate training course, which is sponsored by the MSBA. was actually appropriate training course, which is sponsored by the MSBA. And what it does is it allows for us to be able to identify and to provide monthly submissions to the Mass School Building Authority, or again, the MSBA, on an online system that identifies all of our expenditures that we're incurring regarding our new middle school project that we've been building. Um, what this report is that I provided to you is in essence a summary of the submissions that we provided each month since, in essence, the January two thousand and twelve submission up through the, the one that we actually, or that I put through back on August twenty-eighth, which was obviously last week. Um, again, this is just an overview of it, but if you have any questions on this or the, any of the other information relating to this, I'll be more than happy to go over that as well.
Are there any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
You're welcome.
And we don't need to go into executive session this evening. I would like to congratulate Dorothy Sutton on completion of her first meeting. And with that, good night, everyone.